See here?
Yeah.
I didn't see him, he's got more hair than I can see. But he's on lady sitting is the young, two young female granddaughters awaiting the third. It could happen anytime, so. I don't think Cooper's around. I've been happy with it. Next up on agenda is speaking, and always happy to welcome my friend Clay Walker to report to the commission with an update of activities on networks. Clay will reach us for a moment while you talk with me.
Okay, thank you. As always, it's a pleasure to be here. Seeing many of you out and about and doing various things and at various good little events and celebrations the past few months and past few weeks. Friend John Rose is here and some of y'all were together watching the I-Max Theater announcement in Kingsport. Just all this stuff, you know, that they're doing there or Chambers do, what tourism folks do and what we're doing traditionally in the county development, it's all connected, all tied together. So, good newsletter streams. Some of the things we've worked on this past quarter. I know normally, again, you guys get the newsletter and then up there the very next day, but y'all ran off to Chattanooga. You had plenty of time to read the newsletter or plenty of time to grow, whichever preference may be. But, you know, which it just seems like, and I think it's because just so much going on and you're, we've been so busy with the projects, that semen announcement, partnership part two, that our website, it doesn't seem like it was just this past quarter that we were out there celebrating that. And then, of course, we're still in the throes of legal documents, getting it straight. But as you know, Anita's snack foods in Kingsport and one of our networks, Industrial Park, Gateway Commons. Just for various reasons, they strategically decided not to have these coast presence they had in the past. So, they went and found a company to partner and make that and what a great testament to that company that they didn't just pull out of the mean, they pulled it back. So, I don't know, we've been even knowing today about some things on that. So, and all that stuff is very complex and talk some of you coming in or sitting around here as we're waiting for the meeting to start. The projects that we're working now, and many of you know some of the, a few of the details about some of them, they're just the highest part of deals and they involve offices and headquarters and high number of jobs, high wages. They're just moving very slowly. But our queue of projects trying to help with prospects is, is brutal, exactly as it's been in the nine plus years I've been here. And the quality of them are, is just harsh as a whole to any town where we're at working. We're also working on having many systems and a lot of work on workforce development, childcare. Sam Jones was talking to me earlier about Dana Lynn, a former network employee, she's a partner in the service now, and she does a lot of work with childcare. She presented at the Congress Conference for Economic Development, also in Chattanooga with you.
Yeah.
And we're talking to her about the new things to help our major employers with one of the big issues that people are getting to work is this chopper, that's no means, chopping by the stream. But the states doing really innovative things and add Dana in the position there, we should know how it would be. So, we hope that we're working the first year of development on some things in that regard. And just, we just finished with our partners who did the leadership. We supported the First Tennessee Development District on their education and employment E to E conference, which just gets better every year in my view. And the Department of Labor, Workforce Development was here to speak and she talked about all things and our friend, Dr. Jeff McFord has started a business to their continuing. A lot of things that began right here in Sullivan County, they're now state-wide issues. We're still working on property development, on securing all the details on the land over Valley Clara, on the Port Parkway, proceeding with KDB and talked to the state about potential grants. We had to run the state's program, but they sold it review and give us advice on that property and many other properties throughout our county, their sites and potential industrial sites. We had an existing industry meeting that wasn't this, I think actually that was two weeks into this quarter, I think that's actually this quarter, Rhythm's Discovery Center at Bell. It's always easy to get folks out to go to Bell to see the helicopters and so, co-op pilots or if any of you haven't been there, you have a chance to go over there. It's really good stuff. And again, it's amazing things that we make here in the local city like that. So, and we also received another million dollar grant to develop more of our sites in partnership with, first of all, a million dollars from, from the state. The project we're seeing been announced, we're not happy that I believe that we made the capital million dollar grant from the state three years ago. And it's rare that the state would follow up a million dollars in an industrial park for developing more property. So, I think that speaks to how well we have worked with the state and they know we're getting money here, we're going to use. And because we all stewardship in certain of our cities and our city personal needs for, and just the strong partnership that we have. We've seen some dividends pay off this past quarter and really that six months. But I think, again, these projects are moving very slow, but I think there's just tremendous news in front of us for the next six months. I look forward to seeing so much more about these projects as we get. Anyway, per usual, I just want to give you the overview, but again, I know you're a busy citizen yourself, but if you have any questions of me and then, of course, just always the thank you for the support beyond financial support, to support each show and everybody in your involvement, engagement, and all the capability, it really does encourage me and the entire staff. So, any questions, I'd be happy to have me taken. And if there's any math, I'll give those to John Rose.
Any questions? Pleasure, you direct the right job and ask the most questions. I'll send them in, of course, and thank you, and we look forward to your next visit. Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. Next up, we have appointments and, first appointment, as you recall, last month, the Hill and Hill Utility Commission had directed me that I appoint Tim Earle as their number one choice for every sort of director. And that has normally given a potential two if I object to that appointment. I would reflect for and at request of a commissioner who wanted to look at that appointment further, I delayed that appointment until either next month or whatever came first. And the statute says the mayor, and I'm not sitting at their party, if the mayor fails to appoint the recommendation of the utility board, that within 21 days, that member automatically becomes a member of that board. And I was aware of that, and I will tell you that lacking any extremely important information that I might give, I would not turn down the request of appointing the directors who were acting in the best interest of the people that they deserve. And I received none, obviously, in that 21 days, so I let that appointment become effective. And Jim is now on Tim Earle as a member of the board of directors of the Hill Utility. And I, I don't think there was any, anything wrong with the way that was done. And I would tell you that if you have utilities in your future and you are entitled to the letting see nominees, please let me know because that's the only, that's the first step in my investigation of this legislative form. And I would rely on you to tell me those extended way of truck patches that I might have to. So, don't hesitate to do that, certainly no harm done, a team member of the member of the board. And during the next vacancy that I have to look at or others. So, having said that, the next appointment, and this is a appointment that must be ratified by the committee commissioners to the Southern County Library and the other reporting operator members. And the board of directors of the library have nominated Sheila C. Irvin as a member. And if we have a motion to, to throw with the board of commissioners, I have a question for Commissioner Gardner, Commissioner Crawford, Commissioner Crossway. Will do a voice vote on those and don't hesitate to voice your opinion. All those in favor of the motion to nominate Ms. Irvin, I'd say yes.
Aye.
Those votes, no? The ayes have it and Ms. Irvin will be notified that she is now a duly elected member of the Southern County Library Board. Next up is appointment to the Southern County Regional Historic Zoning Commission here in Longville. And their board has recommended that Anita Wong be reappointed to the board as long faithfully. Have motion to Ms. Crossway, Ms. Crawford, Ms. Mead, and as I have up is over here, the second, in discussion, sitting down, all in favor of Ms. Long of the motion, sitting by saying yes.
Aye.
Those votes, no? Ms. Long is appointed to this Regional Historic Zoning Commission. Another appointment, another member is Mr. Ed Bush, has been appointed by the Southern County Commission. Those of you around Loughlin who have worked at Alameda has served faithfully. And so, we have a motion for Ms. Crawford and Crossway, second, in discussion, all those in favor of motions in, I'd say yes.
Aye.
Those votes, no? And Mr. Bush, and I will have to say this, I certainly welcome him as a very active member of that Regional County Commission. If you hadn't been to the Blizzard Museum in the Anderson Townhouse, I recommend you go because Ed has some help, but I just took his records in my schedule. I think him and I will be happy to notify him that he's been reappointed. Next up, we've got all the appointments we have, and we have the commission minutes for previous meeting. Mr. Gardner, second by, Mr. Jones, Ms. Crawford. Any additions, corrections, or? Sitting down, have you got that on board? Have that on board and board open. Get your vote and emotions and yourselves in at that point. Everyone vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Twenty-one yes, three no.
Having seen necessary majority, it's approved, except approval of no republics. Again, as your constituents, we want to apply to no republic quite a service to the public. Some folks do it for reasons, folks make it on yet, but encourage folks to come up here and apply for a good recommendation, I'm sure you will enjoy. I'm Burton Reedley.
Brett Ball, Donna Lane Beasley, Donna E. Glasswell, Melody Jo. Listo, Angelia Renee Grenser, Sidney Paige Rule, Regina Van Furk, Lindsay Byington, Ashley Thanham Henkel, Ashley Marie Carroll, Karen Holman, Daniel D. Kong Huxton, Amber N. S. Brown, Pamela S. Davis, Ravenne Dickinson, Samantha Dalton, Kelly E. Stett, Betty Feig, Spotty Lee Gatterow, Jessica Gilbert, Andrew Graham, Susan O'Herhale, Cindy D. Herron, Heather P. Amanda Aaron, Carol A. Hicks, Michelle D. Howington, Frederick Earl Potchens, Timothy Hudson, Sarah E. Hutchinson, Christie M. Tuthen, Luke Isbell, Ashley Jensen, Shannon Kelly, Morgan Kite, Jessica Leonard, Monita Hope Lewis, Roy E. Matthews Jr., Travis L. Merrill, Sandy Minton, Julie R. Morell, Daniel Neely, Carrie L. Olivia, Julian Paige Owen, Teresa Pearson, Gwen J. Hugh, Stephanie A. Robinson, Sally Joanne Roy, Lena Kathleen Wetter, Angela Scott, Joseph Gabriel Cheryl, Lilian Nicole Smith, Elizabeth R. Stoller, Krista Dante, Kristen Faith Trump, Sheila K. Denzel, Jerry S. Wade, Abigail Shaw Quipple, Ladonna Williams, Rebecca Anne Moore.
You've heard the list, are there any objections to any person who has applied to the no republics election? Seeing none, with the motion to adopt, Mr. Gardner, Ms. Crawford, is not to this as opposed. In discussion. Seeing none, we're ready to vote, board open to capture votes. This note is ready. Everyone vote. Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Twenty-one yes, three no.
Having seen necessary majority, the list is approved and adopted after this. Next up is Mr. Cross's opportunity to direct his house to the smoke. And you're out, producer, you're hearing the list, I know you get more child net or kids work out.
Yes, they do.
We have, thank you. We do not have anyone signed up to public comment, but as is traditional, I ask if anyone in the audience might have missed the list and not known that they needed to sign up for public comment, and if they did so, please identify yourself at this time. I would recognize you for, public area closed, so if anyone would seek recognition. Next up, the consent agenda at your work session last, seems like more than, I wish, well, just in that, we also did not, we approved her four resolutions on consent agenda, out of one through four. Is there anyone who would like to vote any of those out of all of the consent agenda yourself this time? Without objection, I will entertain a motion for adoption of consent agenda with Cross, but Mr. Watkins, second. Objection, with board open, so capture votes. And the consent agenda as presented, let's see, you men have the votes of? Everyone vote it? Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Twenty-one yes, three no.
Having seen necessary majority, consent agenda is adopted. Next up, resolution agenda, and that could be out of number five. You're recognized, out of number five.
Thank you, Chairman. Out of number five is initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not succeed seventeen million general obligation public improvement on Sullivan County. And I will clarify that the seventeen million includes EMS building, colonial heights, the Kingsport Justice Center renovation, and the improvements to the Bluntwood School Campus, including other issuance costs. And as you can see, the Fisher Hospital Center gave each of our campus Bluntwood School Campus improvements. And as you can see from the resolutions, in order to adopt, we got to do it in about three sections, three resolutions. So, therefore, I was trying to read all this, but anyway, we know the EMS building, working on some soil testing right now. Kingsport Justice Center is available, which includes six million dollars for us and then the eight million dollars for the school campus.
Question? You've heard the explanation, what's the right move, you made it in a motion and adoption of out of number five, directed by various commissioners. Any questions? Seeing not, you're ready to vote, out of number five. The board open, just capture votes for out of number five, we're watching you vote. Everyone vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Sixty-one yes, five no, three no.
Having seen necessary majority, out of number five, the doctor. Out of number six? You've heard, you've written out of number six.
This is second, second of three of them, initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not succeed seventeen million general obligation public improvement on Sullivan County. Feet resolved, no cap issue, Sullivan County, that for the first Friday, construction renovation, equipment improvement, county archives, EMS, administrative justice facilities, acquisition of property, principal amount, not succeed seventeen million dollars. And then this is the second of three to this process.
You heard the explanation? What's the right move to commission adoption, adoption, out of number six, Southern County various commissioners. In discussion. Of course, this will be the last, because in the newspaper, the last people know that we've been voted on.
Right.
That it hasn't been voted on, and it does legal publication, if not approving or disapproving, just legal publication. Any other questions? The board open, just capture vote on legal publication. Everyone vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Sixty-one yes, five no, three no.
Having seen necessary majority, out of number six, this is adopted. Next up, Mr. Gray from out of number six.
Thank you, Chairman. And I will refrain from reading all these papers, you know, when we were guarding up the final and third step of issuing the obligation bonds and the talks about the trust company, fees, what to do and all that. I will say, as I've read these before, it is interesting reading them, I would highly recommend it, but I'll have to read it later.
Mr. Gray, the right move is in voters, we made adoption in introduction and adoption of out of number seven, for the governor's sponsors, board open for discussion. Great, you've written out.
Yes, I like the move that we tabled is still in the month.
You moved to table?
Yes, sir.
Yep. That's it. Seeing none.
All seconds.
I believe, I don't believe you got under a hundred, yeah, a few, but I'm going to, I'm going to reuse it because obviously you want to have a vote on this, your colleagues. So, any, for any discussion on the motion to table? Do I assume that you were recognized? Do you need to be recognized now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just going over this list of all the improvements to the Bluntwood Campus, two baseball fields, a softball field, at least one people ball field, markets, baseball facilities, conference room with three hundred attendees seating, farmer's market signage for the building, directory for the building, developing office spaces, at least one additional elevator, landscaping, lighting, children's playground concession stands. It just seems to me that we're throwing a lot of stuff together that maybe doesn't mesh, like having, having a farmer's market with office space, I don't know. Well, I'm getting at is maybe we should consider, especially in this economy, cutting a few things from these improvements and just, you know, doing what needs to be done, you know, saving, maybe see if we can save a million or two from this. That's, that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any questions for the sponsor of the motion or? Any question? Motion required a simple majority, but, a first motion required a simple majority, but. No further discussion? Angie, you've been able to get the motion table on the?
No, uh-uh, you want me to? I didn't know.
Yeah, let's, let's hold her, hope that you're going to get that on board.
Do you want that?
Not with that. Just put a motion to table out of number seven, Angie.
Okay. I wish you'd get.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, motion table is on board, but I'll ask one more time for any questions or discussion. Seeing none, the board open, capture vote on motion to table. A yes vote is motion to table, not considered, out of number seven. Everyone vote? Anyone wish to change your vote? That's our take vote.
Sixty-one yes, fifteen no, three no.
Motion fails for lack of a majority, we're back on out of number seven. That's worth putting that back on the board. Mr. Sponsor, you're recognized, any different comments or if there's no comments or discussion, we're ready to vote on out of number seven.
No, I do appreciate what was said, we've had conversations, five scenes. This is a big issuance of bonds, seventeen million dollars, as this proceeds are to be done for the EMS in Kingsport and overall funding of the improvements of the campus there, Bluntwood, make it what we want it to be after spending money to buy it, so I have no problem.
But because of the Justice Center and EMS, I'd like to make another motion to move that we separate the school campus from this and proceed on with bond, the Justice Center and EMS.
If I'm saying the motion is right, the Commissioner moves to separate questions, and I don't know, there's not more than one question, the question is whether you approve this, that has been provided in the resolution, and so, we, I don't believe we can divide one question, and Mr. County Attorney, could I lean on you for your part in that?
Well, I tend to.
I'm sorry.
I tend to agree with you, Mr. Mayor, this resolution is for the issuance of seventeen million dollars in bond. I have not read it, but I don't think it allocates the money, I think it's just a motion to approach seventeen million dollars in bond, so I don't know that it can be divided either, I don't think it can.
And that's, I'm ruling the question cannot be separated, out of the chair, therefore, Mr. Slade, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Andrew made this statement, that eight million dollars should be spent for the local campus, I will make a motion to amend to reduce the bond amount by eight million dollars, until we get more information.
Did you get that motion?
Motion to reduce the bond amount by eight million, is that what you said, okay.
That's a proper motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Bluth, do we have other seconds that would like to be on this? Commissioner Ward like to be on, Commissioner Good like to be on, have a second. Sam, you want to be second, or you just want to be recognized?
If we get a second, I want to know if we got a second on Mr. Means.
I know, we did not get second on, but I will just add over.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, a proper motion, and a second. Angie, would you put that motion on board?
Motion to.
Motion to reduce the bond issue by eight million dollars. Mr. Brown, you're recognized.
I'd like to get a point of clarification here, if it is separate these bonds, does this mean we have to issue another bond at a later date?
That is true. Yes. That would be up to, up to permission. It would, if they propose the, the board issuing bond, that would be up to permission to either go for or against issuing bond. Yes, if you're gonna find what has been described, you would have to issue, I mean, probably negative repercussion from issuing multiple bonds, I'm trying, probably negative repercussion from issuing several bonds. Well, the motion as I stated is to reduce the amount of, so you approach that in one way, that you would, you reduce the amount, you took that on each and then about project. Eighteen being somewhat of less than fifty percent, folks, you could approach it that way, you could approach it by picking out projects that were eight million dollars, and didn't add, but that would require permission, in my opinion, permission approved. That, that's it? Okay. Now we got Sam going, but Sam, you're recognized.
Thank you, Joe.
I'm sorry.
Joe, crosswalks are good.
Oh, Joe, I'm sorry, I put you, I put you up there and didn't know it, okay. If I known it by something, I would even put you up if I knew.
Thank you sir, appreciate. I hope that you all will really think about this, this community needs this facility to have, right now, Matthew's kinda overseeing the ball, or two courts, he can't keep the schedule, this day is full. If you come up there and look around, there's people walking around the track, we wanna start the, I say we, the Rui Tan wants to start the ball fields again, I play ball on those fields, they need to be fixed, we heard that we're gonna have an exercise room for seniors, which that would be need, we bought this, we bought this building for the community, and that's what we're gonna use it for, and talking about the elevator, well, we need storage places, people, archives, you can't get Matthew's office, we've got, we've got records from one end of this county to the other, that can be utilized there. This is just, we are blessed that we've got this building, so please consider this, and if we get another bond, it's just gonna be more, more interest, higher rate, so I would hope that you all will really think about this when you make your vote, because it is necessary for a community.
Now, Commissioner Johnson, please, you're up.
Thank you Mayor. This is for Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey, have you already done, looking at the bond market and seen what the availability is, and did, were we approaching that market based on the seventeen million, and what that amount would, the rate would be? And others of type, will you, can you pin this? So if we went back and had to go back and do it again, or the more costs involved?
There would be two factors involved, one would be the additional cost for issuance, that's not a very expensive thing, but it is probably a hundred and something thousand dollars each time you bring issue to the market, you have to do certain things individually each time. The second thing is probably more important, as I was advised this morning by our advisory company, that the rate went up like quarter percent last month, two point two five, last week, I'm sorry, and who should say, and I'd have to say, the last time we got into a situation of issuing bonds this time of year, we, it was over the hundred and forty million dollar school bond issue, we delayed it till the first of the year, and it went up a whole percent, and we're still paying for that today. So I'd say that is the biggest, largest factor involved, is to delay, you're probably gonna be paying more interest, because you're gonna get past the calendar year, and that is a, normally a point of fluctuation in the market, toward the end of the fiscal year or calendar year, opening of the year.
Thank you, appreciate. Commissioner Law, you're recognized.
The first two resolutions we voted on the night on having this bond was public notice on seventeen million, and the issuance of the bond, now we're talking about reducing eight million, so now we're gonna have to back up and redo the first two resolutions. Now, second of all, the seventeen million dollar bond, is that, is that gonna, Mr. Bailey, this is for you, is this gonna be a tax increase, if we should pass seventeen million dollar bond tonight, to pay for the debt service of the bond?
It could very well be, yes.
And then, and then if it was an increase, how much of an increase would it be?
The projected increase would be possibly three point one, three point one cents.
Is there another comment?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Slade, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it sir, and the Honorable Commissioner Crosswhite, my neighbor here, I appreciate her sentiments, and I actually don't disagree with what she had to say, I think space should be made useful for the public, and we purchased that building, and we shouldn't have necessary improvements to make usable for the community, but we shouldn't be spending eight million dollars, Silver County taxpayer funds without a plan, and I would just say to you, the draft copy laid on our desk prior to this meeting is far from a plan, so we have the lack of knowledge and competency to put together a private project plan with a budget, if we could do that, I would certainly be in favor of seeing that. City Bristol is evaluating a seven and a half million dollar expenditure for a major league designed field, turf, two clubhouse, showers, walkers, and offices, and expanded seating capacity, and other things, a lot of great work, and we've got four million in here that was voted for, two baseball fields, I just, I'm struggling with the math, and I don't believe we've done the work, so I do fully support the EMS station, we support the Kingsport Justice Center, until we get a better plan of this, I think it's irresponsible to spend this much.
Thank you, Commissioner Slade. Commissioner Harvey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm gonna be back on Commissioner Crosswhite's comments in regard to this project, and I'm probably a little biased, just because I'm all back on Bluntville, in County C, and how important I think that is to our county, when we were down in Chattanooga, one of the things that happened was that county was recognized for innovative projects that they were doing, and this one really comes to mind, it pops up, it's something that I think our county can really shine, and be an example to other counties in Tennessee, so I'm hoping that this goes really well, and we make good decisions with this, with this funding, and that these other counties can benefit to see this, this kind of innovation and what we've done, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bluth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, I talked about amendment to a resolution, and I got pretty much targeted because I didn't have a plan, and that's when I wanted to get the county to pull this a little bit more. And the problem I got this, is there's no plan here, it says, time of details cannot be determined until town is exactly amount of funding is available, the other problem I got this was, an elevator isn't coming out, it's gonna have two floors, if any of us would've been told by that, we go through the building committee, it's gonna have two floors, another elevator's gonna cost us over a million and two, or probably a million and three for to do both, I don't understand why there's been no communication there. The problem I've got, I voted for on the Kingsport Justice Center, I voted on the EMS, I have a problem spending this kind of money on this, when we have people in county right now that get paid, or, wait, taxes, we've got thirty nine hundred people in county right now, that get paid, and until there's a plan to tell me how much it's gonna cost, we know there's an architect involved, but what, who is it, who is this architect? And who are we paying to do this play for us? I love to see children play, I want the farmer's market sound good to me, and I, but I just have a problem taking eight million dollars and putting it in a pile and say here, you know? I could probably vote for it, if every single thing, that many of these projects came in as the county commission, county commission approval on every single one of them, I could probably do that, if it came before this, but I need to vote on this, you know, if we're gonna do the softball field, we need a amount of how much it's gonna cost for this softball field, county commission votes on it, that's affordable, pickleball court, that's fine, but I just have problems with eight million dollars in a pile, without county bill, I'm sorry. Like I said, there's several of you guys, Commissioner Aker, you're sponsoring this, nice one of you, you pretty much suddenly outwound with the backwater, because I didn't have a plan, and I see no plan here.
There's not much more. There's not much more. We didn't know what we wanted to do. You know, we want the.
Well, I know, that's fine, that's a good answer, but that's all I've got, if we want to separate this, and let's do the, the Kingsport Justice and EMS, I mean, but I'm about, you know, the.
Thank you. Commissioner Mains, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I was raised in this town, that school raised me, I am who I am today because of the people there, like my, Mrs. Harvey and I have spoken, it's hard to not have emotional ties to that place, because I love it so dearly, and that's where I am with this, I want it to be done right, and I want it to be a shining example, but if we don't lay the foundation right, and we don't do it right at the beginning of this, it's easy to see where it could get, it could unravel real quickly, so it's just to pump the brakes, and just to get it right, that's it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thing that really gets me about this, though, is when you look at everything else that we're doing with this bond, when you look at the EMS station, when you look at the Justice Center, those are things that are absolutely necessary, we have to have those, and then when you look at the proposed improvements for the Bluntville campus, a lot of this stuff is like a wish list, you know, it's not a hundred percent necessary, you know, I mean, you don't always get everything you want for Christmas, so to me, we need to take a very hard look at this, and see if we can cut one million, two million, three million of this eight million dollar price tag, and try to save the taxpayers some money. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward, you're recognized.
Man, this is a tough one right here, right before I left, she wrote, be nice, be nice tonight. I have a lot of respect for you, buddy, and I'm not sure you're on board with this, I really believe that in my heart, I've seen you do many resolutions with passion and fire, man, I'm not sitting right here, I'm just, you know, I voted the EMS station, and we talked two and a half years about the EMS station, and I'm all for that, Justice Center, and we, I've been to John Rose's office, we've spoke, we've been talking about that for a year plus. Bluntville campus, I got an email, an hour and ten minutes before the meeting, and we're about to spend eight and a half million, I just thought, I'm playing, I just wanna play until I'm up, what do we do? I mean, we spent three years on two point seven million, we're gonna spend an hour, all I got was an email, an hour before the meeting, I mean, we're, I had, I had no problems with making Bluntville campus better, but eight and a half million, I, I can't, I just like to see a plan, you know, some drawings, something from an architect, something saying, hey, here's where this money's going, other than just put it in a pot, and just wanna draw out of that need, I can't support this.
We're on the email, it's, I would remind you to reduce the bond by eight million dollars and nothing, uh, nothing, that's the motion. Commissioner Hayes, you're recognized.
Kind of the same thing Travis just said, I was not gonna speak until the sponsor himself said there is no plan, there's not much of a plan, or there wasn't worth it, I think it's a lot to this body, we've spent hours up here discussing whether we spend thirty five, one thousand on office perfect, or we're gonna spend eight million dollars on nothing. I'm in the house right now, it took me months of blueprints, and finances, and plans to take them to the finance committee before they allow me a few hundred thousand, and here you, oh, we've got some piece of paper with some scribble on it, and it won't take that way, that doesn't look sensible, we're not capable of this.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sted, I'm here, I'm recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Slade, I would ask if Mr. Aker agrees to roll this resolution out the next month, would you forward your motion to split? That would give us a whole nother month to get information, that would allow our colleagues to get their. It took me months of blueprints and finances and plans to take them to the finance committee before they allowed me a few hundred thousand. And here you, oh, we've got some piece of paper with some scribble on it and they won't take it halfway. That doesn't look sensible. We're not capable of this.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sted, your recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schley, I would ask if Mr. Aker agrees to throw this resolution out the next month, would you forward your motion to split? That would give us a whole nother month to get information that would allow our colleagues to get their answers.
Commissioner Aker, I allow you to respond to. That was a request and I don't know what you're about.
That was just a request.
Split on like first reading?
Splitting on first reading tonight. If Mr. Schley agrees to pull this motion, split, that would give us thirty days to come back and have some kind of, get everyone's questions answered so we can walk into this with a lot better vote than what we had tonight and everyone's questions answered. I think that would be fair to this whole commission on that.
I don't think that's unfair asked. My question would be, is if we're going to go down that road and she will not, is the plan will be from the county or from a site plan person?
You know, I guess that's, I guess that will come around the mayor's office and budget and the building committee on that amount of information coming back. But at least in thirty days, we'd have everyone on board. I think we could get most questions answered a little more than we are tonight, put a lot of minds at ease. I think that'd be a little fair to the commission. And we're going to have committees reestablished after tonight as we go through, they could go through the committees this next month, work session and back to full session. That's a lot of questions to get answered.
And this may be for Dan or if we put it on first reading, can we also add an amendment? I'm trying to get you up there, Harvey. I may have too many open. I gotta get some help sometime. There you are. That's your recognition.
Thank you, sir. First, a question procedurally. Should we put this on first reading? Should we not go back to the record and revoke those prior to?
Resolutions withdrawn. Should we vote on the amendment?
Should we vote on the prior two resolutions associated with this bond, just for the record?
I'm not sure I understand what you mean by prior to. And Dan, jump in here.
The prior resolutions related to the bond, Mr. Chairman? Since we're on the record as passing those on under waiver rules, immediate introduction, should we?
Prior, prior to, prior to. No, I think they, they would be in a plant until we act on the third, they're properly passed or they're, they don't depend on each other.
Well, you know, I guess I apologize.
I was going to say something about resolutions five and six and then struggling with seven because it seemed to me once you passed five and six, there was no need for seven. But of course, when I choose to be quiet, I regret it. When I speak, I regret it. So I'm never right, but I mean, they are inconsistent. You've already passed this resolution twice. Resolution five passed it. I wanted to know what five, five says you're voting on six and seven and you passed it. And then six passed and then you struggled with seven. So I chose to be quiet, but no, you've already approved this bond twice, in my opinion, but now you've struggled with seven. So I think it's going to clean itself up. I think if everybody understands what we're doing, basically, you're.
Dan, those are independent resolutions, whether they have any effect or not. We pass a resolution times fact all the time.
Well, I think they, particularly number six, it doesn't say approve the bond, resolution number six.
I believe number six is legal publication, is that right?
Yeah. I think we have to go back.
Six, oh, well, okay, if you think six is just a resolution to run in the paper, okay, I can go with that. Then what was five? I've been confused. I think as long as this commission, everybody understands what we're doing, we'll get it straightened out. So if you, if you think resolution seven needs to be passed in order to approve the bond and you're deferring it, then I think it goes without saying that you're also, to some extent, suspending whatever you did with five and six. I mean, it has to, otherwise they're inconsistent.
Thank you, Dan, and I'd like to play a part in being consistent since the first one. So I'm going to, I'm going to rule that five and six stand alone. And they did, and they were voted on and approved alone. Seven will be considered on first reading at the next meeting of the Southern County Commission. Now, Matt, you've still got the floor.
Thank you, sir. If five and six cannot be placed on first reading officially along with seven, then I will not withdraw my amendment.
I truly believe that after this body voted on those, you have to vote to rescind As I say, one might relate to the other, but it doesn't depend on it as a resolution. And that's my logic. It may be wrong, but that's my logic and that's all I can go by. And so it would set this body up at its next meeting where you consider item number seven or number eight or other. And it's, and with the thought in mind, as Dan says, as everybody knows what's going on, that if you don't approve eight, five and six, or seven, five, if you don't approve seven, five and six are not going because they don't do it. They don't publish it in the paper. We don't do that. As I say, I don't think I can lump those three together. I expected to have a motion to lump them together because we've done that in the past. But since we've handled them separately, I think they have to stand on their own separately.
Matt? Thank you, sir. Just to kind of clean this up, maybe, you know, I will rescind the amendment if we can rescind the vote on five. We can still do the public notice on six and bundle five and seven, put them on first reading. We would have to amend six, I guess.
I think, I think we're going to have to, I can't do that and neither can Gary. I think we would have to call from the table, motion to reconsider, Dan, is five and six. And we have to vote on those separately because the motion to reconsider is on the table. Why? I said we would have to have that, to lift the motion from the table.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
We have to go through that process. It didn't come from anywhere.
I already have an active motion, so I don't know if this is out of order, but I would make the motion to reconsider items five and six.
Let's do them individually if you certainly don't mind. You're moving to remove from the table the motion to reconsider and then to vote on them or to have the sponsor, and the sponsor would have the choice of putting those on first reading also.
Why don't we just make a motion to combine the three? Is that proper? Why don't we just combine the three into one, to your point a moment ago? We probably should have done that initially, just to combine the three, five, six and seven. But I don't know if we can after a vote.
We've already voted on five and six. The motion to reconsider five and six, I think would be in order.
I'm making the motion to reconsider five and six.
No, you make a motion to reconsider our actions on five.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a second.
I'll say.
We have a second across in the car. And you want to put that on the board? Motion, okay, motion, motion to reconsider our action. That's just to bring you back up. That's not to vote on it. It's just to bring you back up for a vote, okay?
The verdict is hard to finish and that would be a motion to reconsider item five.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to respond to what Commissioner Sted, but he has a motion on the floor before we do that. Did you withdraw your motion?
I would withdraw my motion to amend if we can.
Okay, that motion is withdrawn without objection. Okay, now we're ready to go.
Motion to reconsider item five and item six.
Item five.
Just item five.
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't think we can do a vote. We'll probably get the same vote, but I think we have to.
But I need to do both of them.
It's just five, right now. I don't like to do that anymore. We're going to do a roll call vote. We said you got it all right.
No, I don't care. I mean, it's just simple to do this one. Okay. Motion to reconsider item five.
Okay, we had a proper motion. The board opened the castor vote requires thirteen votes. Everyone voted. Anyone wants to change their vote? Matt Clark takes the vote.
Fourteen yes, seven no.
I have received necessary majority. I, motion.
Three absent.
I'm sorry?
Three absent. I just need to get that on record.
I'm sorry I interrupted you, sir.
Fourteen yes, seven no.
No, 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 we're good. I have received necessary majority. The motion is adopted and so the motion requires that we bring up item five again and Mr., I know I've got a list. Do you want to talk on item five because we're all beyond this list? Mr. Cross, you want to talk on item five? Didn't think you did. Mr. Lo, you want to talk on item five? Let me do this first and this, I'm trying to give the courtesy of you all speaking, but you speak when you want to. But I would like to recognize the sponsor on item number five for our motion. So we have a motion to put item number five on first reading. Sponsor moves to put item number five on first reading without objection. Item number five on first reading. We have a motion from Mr. Schley to remove from the table the motion to reconsider item six. Yes, Dan?
I don't think it made a, would matter on item five, but I think Mr. Schley voted against the resolution, did you not? He can't make a motion to reconsider. Only somebody that voted in the affirmative. I don't think it's going to matter, but.
No, I, Dan, we want to do this right and I don't think it's any pride of me or Matt either one of them. I'm getting things right if we can get it right at the end. Mr. Cross, you seek recognition for what? Because I got to push my chair back and figure out where we are. Your recognition.
I seek recognition for just that. I just said that he was on the opposing side and it would take someone from the winning, prevailing side to do so. And therefore I was going to make that motion for us because I voted in favor of both five and six.
So you voted in the affirmative?
I voted in the affirmative for both.
Okay. Okay, that's fine and I want to get with Dan and make sure where we are and have no problem with that motion, but we'll do that when we go back in. Just the courtesy, can I recognize you and then we're going to reset it for about five minutes.
I was just trying to reiterate what I spoke of earlier. We should have backed up and done the first two resolutions, not vote on those. Pretty much what we've done here tonight is vote on a bond and the publication of seventeen million dollars, it's a done deal. So, you know, it's a done deal. If we're going to go back and take eight million dollars out of seventeen million dollar bond, then we need to vote first on the publication, which would be item number six, and then number five. And seven can be discarded if I'm correct up to Dan's street. Seven's really no teeth to it. The teeth's already been done and we voted on that.
I'm going to reset. Kit, I'll call you back with the gallows.
Blessings.
You know, the Renaissance, you know, you know.
Our street looks good.
Huh?
Our street looks good.
It is, baby, they painted it.
How are you?
Good.
Good to see you.
Hey.
This is something that they must have made.
Ah, there you go. Well, with that. Yeah, yeah, personally, I was, you kind of take that magic, that's.
He's a decent role, he'll do.
Are you drunk?
Ah, oh, you're good.
Up and down, they were having. Larry, you got the president. Right now, two people. But the issue is called.
He's gonna drop you down.
Are you, are you going down to work with him? Huh?
Yeah.
I'll cancel my day, thank you.
Here's your thing.
How's it going?
Y'all want me to go?
Yeah. How much does it cost? I'm taking each day. I don't know, James, James, how much?
Yeah, I don't know. I hope somebody's helping me with something, something.
You thought we were back in? Mission room? And when we're seated, I'll tell the secretary.
Just like everybody's back in, thank you for the break, we obviously needed it. I conferred with our county attorney, for the budget director, and the technical and division bonds, and county attorney on, obviously, parliamentary procedure. I have, obviously, I believe I made an error in not asking Mr. Slavel if he voted in the affirmative, but I overlooked that, and we should have, so we're gonna go back to prior to that motion, because it was a motion out of order, and we do the best we can to correct what's happened, and that's what we're doing, and Mr. Locke, I want you to, let's speak.
Let's go ahead and vote, on this right here, me.
No, you don't want to speak then?
I'll speak, if you want me to.
Oh. Okay. You asked, you, you thought recognition, you came up here, you said you want to speak, so I'm recognized, I'm.
Okay, this is for Mr. Street there, on five and six, we voted on prior, where we stand, is that, is that correct, what I was saying there, bond been issued and the publication it said be be?
I vote. I believe.
I'm of the opinion that five and six approve the bond issuance, they state very clearly that they approved the bond issuance. I apologize, I thought about saying something, I wasn't really sure why you were gonna vote on it three times, but I think resolution number five approved resolution six and seven, then came six, it approved the resol, the bond issuance, plus it says to run it in the paper, and then seven, it all broke down. I think five and six approved the bond issuance. Now, I will say this. six approved the bond issuance. Now, I will say this, I think resolution seven has all the magic language in it that is necessary for the issuance of a bond, so of the three, it is probably the one that needs to be passed, because it has all the language in it. And I will say this, I do want to get it right, because there can't be any questions about seventeen million dollar bond issuance. They make myself and bond counsel both sign lawyer letters, that there's no problems with the vote. So, I do think five and six approved the bond, I do think the motion to reconsider was out of order, not a proper motion, I do think, however, that seven does need to be passed, and until it's passed, I think there's a cloud on the issuance.
Dan, you, I'll try to clarify what I think you said. You said five and six passed seven. Is that right?
I do think five passed seven, yeah.
I do think resolution number five passed resolution seven. I mean, I don't know what other purpose five was, it says. But, I will say this. You know, I mean, there, well, I don't know what to say, I mean, I don't know. I think five and six passed, I think five passed six and seven, I think the bond has been approved.
And, that's what I want to clarify, as chair, and I appreciate your opinion, but as chair, it's my responsibility to make the decision. And there's enough to make unrest, even though we did not have a third of the members voting against it, and five and six were passed with necessary majority. It's my opinion that we should go ahead with where we are, which is prior to my accepting a motion out of order, and that's where we are, and that's where we got to before I recessed. And we had a proper motion from a member voting in the affirmative, can reconsider our previous action on item number five. I did not get a second before I recessed. Now, and the question is, do you want to reconsider number five, and this is the motion, and as we get these motions, I'm gonna do my best to explain them with the sponsor. Sponsor's responsibility is to explain the motion, explain what the effect would be, and I'm gonna give sponsor a chance to do that, and if another member has a question about that, I want you to raise your hand, and we'll refer that to our parliamentary, and then we refer to the chair for a ruling, and that's the way I understand that this thing works. So, I've got three people, before we get started, I'm gonna give you the courtesy of speaking, and please, I just say keep it brief, we need to get on with our business. Commissioner Baker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I can travel with all of the talk, especially with Dan, five, six, seven. Seven has got all the language in it that I think made it real for everybody, and you gotta understand, we've got ten, although two of them are gone, eight new commissioners that are voting on their first big bond issue for the first time, and everything, to make sure they understand it. And so, I'm fine with putting seven on first reading, and maybe as a couple of us talk, let's have a call meeting in a week or two, just so we can just talk about that bond, so they feel comfortable about that bond, and the repayment of it. Because I don't want to get into technicalities about approving five, six, and all that, because that is, it's seventeen million dollars, and that's still on the table, just as a little better plan of action on the campus, and everything. So, I don't think that's really a motion, I just figured like.
We have, as a courtesy, traditionally honored these sponsors' requests, that's when a sponsor puts a bill before the commission, it belongs to the commission, but as a courtesy, we've always allowed the sponsor to handle his bill. And if that's a motion, after we get back in order and handle the businesses before us, and if the motion that's been made is withdrawn, we can go back to you as the sponsor of number seven. So, does the maker of the motion, Mr. Cross, wish to withdraw your motion, or to vote on it? Andrew, you're recognized.
Well, according to Mr. Baker, I defer to him, as far as if he would like to do that, then I will withdraw that motion, if he would like to do that.
Without objection, he said. Without objection, item number seven is on first reading. I believe we're in proper order to consider item number eight. Commissioner Lock, you're recognized on item number eight. Commissioner Lock, you're recognized.
Thank you. This resolution is to approve amendment for the downtown Keysport redevelopment plan, expanding the project scope, and extend the tip period for downtown Keysport redevelopment district, Rick Garvillis project area. Also, if you flip through to exhibit C, I have a amendment to the resolution, wording here, it says, "Single-family homes that needs to be added, multi- and single-family homes, not just single-family," and I've got that wrote out for the clerk. We voted on this tip about a year ago, this is just to extend the time, no change in money allocation, anything else like that. And waiver of rules can open to questions.
You heard the sponsor's explanation properly seconded. We do have guests here with us, so we'll take questions at this time, for the sponsor, or for those representing the sponsor. Any questions? Seeing no discussion, looks like you're ready to vote. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number eight. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Matt Clark, take vote.
Twenty yes, three absent.
I received necessary majority. I'm sorry. Darling, if you like one more time, I have to remove it. I received necessary majority, item number eight is adopted. Next, item number nine, Commissioner Harvey, you're recognized on item number nine.
Thank you, Chairman. So, this resolution is something that has been reviewed with the administrative committee, it is a strategic plan, three to five-year plan, for seeking federal funds for a satellite public health facility in Bristol, which they haven't had for a while, and I'd like Gary Mays to come up, if he would, and he can answer any questions about this, but it's really just to ask for the commission's support on this, understand that the city manager in Bristol and the city council are in favor of this, so, thank you again.
Commissioner Harvey, do you move the immediate introduction adoption? Do you want to waive the rule tonight?
Yes, please.
Commissioner moves the immediate introduction and adoption of item number nine, seconded by Commissioner Jones. Resist to hear Mr. Mays as witness to answer any questions you might have. Anybody has any questions, sponsor or Mr. Mays, leave it in you. Mr. Cross, why don't you, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I am so glad that this is coming forward. I was actually working at the health department when they closed the Bristol office, and we should never have done that. We need it back, and I just appreciate Cheryl and Sam and Gary, you all working on this, and I'd like to be there as co-sponsor, and hope it goes through. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, you're recognized.
I am. And one of the speakers we had at the conference last week was the commissioner of public health, and I talked to him about this, and I understand there's a group going down to meet with him, and what this is tonight is to have our commission have their back, and they go down and talk to him about getting money to do this, so I wholeheartedly support this. I think when we tore the hospital down in Bristol, the old one that now has a shopping center on it, we lost our health department at that time, is that right here?
I believe that's correct, yes. Thanks, Sam. Good for you, you're recognized. Oh, I'm sorry, darling, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just noticed on the co-sponsor, Commissioner Sam Jones, that there needs to be an S eighty-two, his name. It's not spelled right.
Commissioner?
Do you see it?
I'm sorry?
If you see it, I'm yours. We need to add a S to Sam Jones's name.
I think that's close enough for government work, darling. Any other questions? Gary, get off easy, Doc. Looks like you're ready to vote.
Thank you, Commissioner.
When the board opens, please cast your vote for item number. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Matt Clark, take vote.
Twenty-one yes, three absent.
Take a look first for point, first for approval, Sam, thank you for noting that anytime you go to Nashville, it's great to have county commission have you back. Don't want to go without county.
Chairman agrees, I'd like to have whole commission added on this.
All voting in the affirmative, that is only sponsors, irregular and out of order, but we'll do it. Matt Clark, after all those voting in affirmative, item number nine, as co-sponsors. Since we're playing fast and hard with rules anyway, so. Item number ten, Commissioner Glover, you're recognized on item number ten.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to amend the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four solid waste fund budget to account for the use of a twenty thousand dollar used automotive fluid recycling grant for Sullivan County. You guys won't be redressed out of want with anything, it's therefore is out of order, county commission for Sullivan County still a regular session, and then the twenty-three, twenty-four solid waste fund budget, and then I'm twenty thousand dollars to be funded from revenues provided by the state of Tennessee for used oil recycling.
I've heard the explanation, Commissioner, you want?
What has to waiver rules on this, so Mr. Torbit can go ahead and proceed.
No objection?
No.
I'm sorry?
What has to waiver rules on this, so Mr. Torbit can go ahead and proceed.
Objection, Commissioner has to waive the rule, immediate introduction doctrine by item number ten, seconded by Commissioner King, Commissioner Vanover, Commissioner Baker, do you have a question?
Yes, sir, Chairman. To the sponsor, I know this is, after being supposedly tarred the feather last month, and this talks about used oil and all that, did you sign it and blow it?
Yes.
Okay.
That was from last month.
I don't want to say, that's one thing about Herschel, he'll give his all for his, for his people, and everything.
You started something. Mr. Pierce, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Will there be recyclable oil places in Keysport for oil?
I would defer to that question, Mr. Torbit, I think there's already places for this, and it will be picked up at different locations, from what I understand. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any other questions? Seeing now, I believe you're ready to vote, require sixteen votes for passage. When board opens, cast your vote. Has everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Matt Clark, take vote.
Twenty-one yes, three absent.
I received necessary majority, item number nine, ten is passed. Item number eleven, Commissioner Vanover, you're recognized on item number eleven.
Hopefully, this will be real quick. Item eleven is an amendment to a resolution which I had last month, is to authorize the mayor and the county attorney to sign contracts with Tennessee Department of Transportation for improvements at John Bead intersection and Bloomingdale Road. There was one word in the resolution last month that was incorrect, the very last sentence, says to authorize up to fifty thousand dollar payment for the county share to come from the existing highway department fund balance. Last month it read from the highway department funds, so we're just changing highway department funds to fund balance, and I'd like to ask for waiver rules for the immediate adoption of this resolution.
Commissioner Vanover moves immediate introduction adoption of item number eleven. Commissioner Glover, you're recognized.
Zane, who's the co-sponsor on this?
Mr. Crawford. Commissioner Crawford.
I'm sorry, I think we do have some typos over there.
It had my blood on front of the code, and then had Zane's name, but I didn't see who's co-sponsor.
Just so through the other thing.
Mr. Crawford, he is.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, sponsor? Seeing now, appears you're ready to vote, and board opens, cast your vote on item number eleven, require sixteen votes for passage. Everyone voted? Anyone wish to change your vote? Matt Clark, take vote.
Twenty-one yes, three absent.
I received necessary majority, item number eleven is adopted. Item number twelve is sponsored by Commissioner Iverson, who mentioned earlier results, and that's a Commissioner Harvey, you make the Commissioner Iverson question, first reading. Commissioner Harvey, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution is to establish a committee that will review, I have a process for reviewing applications and reports and re-applications for all the nonprofit organizations that are requesting funds from Sullivan County Commission. Right now, we don't really have any accountability when our nonprofits come, we just have been giving the money, we haven't really asked what it was used for, it may have initially been requested for one thing, and then we never follow up to find out, you know, what ongoing, what this money's gonna be used for. So, this is just an opportunity to have build criteria and metrics and applications, so that when people either apply for it, or want to continue to have the money provided, that we have a process to do that, we have a committee reviewing it, so that there's no confusion when it comes to budget time.
Without objection, pass it on first reading. Commissioner King, I'm gonna recognize you for questions, sponsor.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Harvey, we're doing the same thing in the budget committee right now. We are going to do a way with all nonprofits at this time, we're going to review them, we're going to have a way to, what would be the word for that, to scale the importance of these with a, each one line by line, till we change all this, so, all I'm saying is, we're in the process of doing that, in November, I think the fifteenth and the twenty-ninth, we're having two meetings to go through every nonprofit, and to set up a process in which we do the funding for the nonprofits, so, I don't know, are we going to do two things at the same time, or, that's my question, you know. If we do this, since we're going to come to the budget committee probably anyway, and we're going, we're in the process of changing all this anyway, so, that's my question, I mean, are we going to give about it two different ways to get the same results, or, and that's just the question. And that's just the question.
I wasn't aware of that, so if this is something that's redundant, then certainly we don't need to do it. But I did not know that we had any kind of process in place for the nonprofits, so it needs to be withdrawn for them to do it.
Well, it is on first reading, and we can talk about that. Mr. Aker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Kind of reiterate what Dwight and I don't know, if Mark knew or not, when he asked about it, I didn't think about it, been real busy. But I see this as an opportunity, as Mr. King said, from the Budget Committee, and based on some other thoughts in here, to redo the nonprofit situation, come up with some better paperwork, make sure they all do it. So, I think it is a discussion, since it's on first reading, to decide if it be a hundred percent of the budget, or if there has a committee that just focuses on the nonprofit, so that way admin's not doing a couple, exec's not doing a few, make sure that we all have a standard process for the nonprofits. Because it is a lot of money we have in the budget, and make sure they're all, you know, aware of what the process is. And we're still, like Mr. King said, we've scheduled a couple of budget meetings in November, just to kind of start the, just trying to figure out what we're going to do, come up with paperwork, paperwork, we've looked at it, and such. So, it may be redundant today, not sure we'll be, where we'll stand here in a month after we finish talking about it and everything.
Thank you. Commissioner Vanover, you're recognized.
I'll speak for Commissioner Iverson, he's not here. We've talked to, we've talked about this a little bit, and I think he just intends this to be, intends for this to be a tool for the other committees to kind of use, to take some of the load off of the other committees a little bit, to be able to have three or four people that can sit down and meet with these nonprofits, and try to prioritize which is more important than others. So, I don't think he means to take anything away from any of the committees, he just wants to try to take a little work off of some others. So, just to be used as a tool, and try to be helpful, I think, is all it is. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, first reading. Right? Without objection. First reading. That completes our resolution, I believe. The only business that I have left tonight, is we passed out the committee assignments that were passed out last month, and have made the changes and read all those assignments that were correct, requested. And let me say, before we vote on this, if during the, during our time, your time here, you want to, a committee, we can do that, all we have to do is just write by it the next month. So, request my office, if I'm not statutorily required by members, I'd be happy to come to that job. I think we ought to use every talent that we have, and every interest that we have on all of these committees. I think we have four attendants sometime, because there's not an interest there, and that's fine, and you might want to get off of it, and you could lower the number that they need per form, if you want to do that. So, these committees are yours, and I think they're very useful, and we probably ought to use them a little bit more, and I'll help you if you want to do that. So, we have this list that we passed out. Is this a list? We obviously left something else, just break, stand in place, if you will. I wasn't aware of that. Oh. We decided on this communication, some members said we left the Budget Committee off. That is not a committee, that has to be ratified by the County Commission. That is a committee nominated and appointed by the mayor, not the chair, but the mayor. So, that's why that's off there. So I will take a motion to approve this list of distributed. Sam Jones, you're recognized.
I believe the Finance, Financial Management Committee is, comes, those nominations come from the floor.
You can do, it's your committee? You can do whatever you want to. Except, there are statutory members on there.
Right. Three, the commission members are nominated for the floor by this commission.
They can be nominated.
I mean, that's what it says in the statute, they would be nominated by the commission after the first one. You pointed the first one.
I'm sorry?
You appointed the first committee members. Then it says after that, the County Commission would appoint its own.
And I will declare, as soon as you finish, I'll declare the floor open to divide this list, if you choose, and we'll vote on that, and then we'll declare the floor open for nominations to whatever we divide off the list. Is that fair?
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cross, why?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a nomination, believe, to Finance Committee, as is, members as is.
That is, let me think. George, as much as I want to recognize that as a proper motion, I think Sam actually said that he wanted to divide. Did you, did you say you wanted to divide it, Sam?
No, sir.
You did.
What I said was, the committee, what's printed was last year's. We, all the others were appointed by you, except we, the County Commission, needs to appoint the Financial Management.
Okay, you answered my question, you answered my question, and we have a proper motion on the floor to accept the list or the Finance Committee, George?
Yes.
List?
The, let the members as is, that are already on.
Do you want to divide that out, or you want to vote for it as a whole?
Let's vote for it as a whole.
Ms. Cross, why, moves to adoption of the list as distributed. Have a second. Mr. Gardner, have a discussion. Commissioner King.
I don't need to speak down, she's covered everything that I was going to do, so I don't need to speak.
Thank you. Commissioner Harvey? Sure, I'll cut you off some, maybe. There you go.
I just have a question, can anybody be added? Can we add?
As long as we don't have a statutory limit, I will be happy to add a person and get it approved by the commission. Now, the commission needs to ratify these, it's your, they're your committees, they're not mine's. So, if you, if you have a desire, I think we ought to give the commission time to consider, and we'll vote on it next time.
May I?
Even though you're out of order, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Jones.
I think Commissioner Stillman was hitting me, but I just wanted to, if you haven't earned aware, our best county commissioner, Judy Blaylock, died, I believe, Saturday. Do you have some, do you have some information on that, on Judy's services?
Before we answer that, that motion is adjourned.
Hold on a second, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make one announcement about the...
You can make plenty of them after we adjourn. Does anybody want to adjourn? Have most of the adjourned, seconded, all those papers sat out, those codes no, adjourned? Now, personal, personal approvals, the microphones open, just push a button and you can talk.
Any new members, exec committee, we're going to be back here at the back table for reasons of organization.
And I would like for us to remember that on this day, in nineteen ninety, in nineteen eighty-three, two hundred and twenty Marines were killed at Beirut, Lebanon. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate your time and mind.